I don't know whether moving it now reflects something that's been happening for a long time.
Do it.
Okay.
All right, we were at the, just opened the public hearing, had to change the disc. Please keep your other conversations down and I will tell you this is the first time I've used the hammer in, uh, maybe four years, that's really weird in my hand. All right, go on.
Thank you Mayor Hunt. To reiterate, Mayor Hunt, members of council, my name is Lamont Myers, I'm Director of Development for Mid-Atlantic Commercial and the manager of the Big Woods Development Company LLC, which is a company we've created specifically for this project. We're very happy and very excited to be here tonight to bring you these plans for the Legacy of Pecosin. Uh, this has been two years in the process for us, um, a lot of work is, that's gone on. I would like to introduce, we have all the members of our development team here with us tonight, some of whom will be making some brief remarks, some of whom are here to answer questions. Uh, and we have Conway Shield, who's our corporate attorney, with Jones Blackman, Walson Kelly, uh, Mr. Shield drafted the covenants and restrictions for the project. Uh, Tom, uh, Tom Johnston, who you met with Franklin Johnston Group, right there.
I'm gonna talk to the microphone. Every time you turn, nobody can hear you.
Okay. Um, we have Donald Davis with Davis and Associates, who's our survey and engineer on the project. Mr. Chris Lawrence from AECom, formerly URS, our traffic consultant. Julie Steele, who's a principal of Environmental Specialties Group, our environmental consultants on the project. Mr. Ted Figura, Ted Figura Consulting, who is a recognized fiscal impact expert and who had prepared the fiscal impact and employment impact. Um, and also we have with us, uh, Mr. John Worley, who may not be making a presentation, but he is president of, uh, of the real estate company. So we brought our team here, we want to have everyone here in case there are questions and we can make sure that we fully answer those. Uh, I would like to start by handing out and entering this into, into the record. Uh, this is a slight revision to the covenants and restrictions that you received to clarify that in fact, uh, all of the apartments, which are all proposed to be four stories, all of them would be served by elevators, uh, that we feel like that is important to people and we want to make sure that that we go on record. I would like to, uh, these are signed and notarized, I'd like to give these to Ms. Wiggins if I may.
Thank you.
Uh, before I start, I really would like to thank Mr. Wheeler and the staff, Ms. Vest, Mr. Wine, uh, everyone in, in community development. It, it's been a really, a wonderful opportunity for us to, to work with the staff and it's, and they've been unfailingly thorough and professional in working with us and ensuring that the interests of the city are met and that what we develop and what we do would represent a win for the city, for the city government, not only the city government, but also the, also the residents of Pecosin. And it's been, uh, it's been a real pleasure to work with the staff and their professionalism and throughout this project and I would just like to publicly thank them for, uh, for the guidance and also for, you know, sharing with us, you know, the things that really are important to the city so that we can make sure that we, that we address those properly. Um, we've been working almost two years with various property owners, the fact that we have nineteen different parcels in the Big Woods, uh, put together is no small feat in and of itself. Uh, some of, many of these properties have multiple owners, um, and several of those owners are here with us this evening. We're very committed, we at Mid-Atlantic are very committed to, to treating all of the owners fairly and being able to help each of them realize value from their property. If you look at the, uh, at the tax map of the Big Woods and you see these nineteen parcels, most of whom, most of which are, are landlocked, no utilities, uh, some of them entirely composed of wetlands, when you put, look at that and you realize that really it's only by working together like this, that these folks who have owned this property and have paid taxes on this property for decades, it's only by working together and, and doing a, a master plan committee like this, that those families have an opportunity to really realize any true value in this property that they've been carrying and been paying taxes on all these years. And it's just been, it's been a wonderful, it's been a wonderful opportunity for us to meet a lot of nice people and it was really precipitated by the leadership of this council in asking the owners to, to come together and to meet one another and to speak and, we were just very fortunate that we were, um, the beneficiaries of the fact that they had already started that dialogue and we were able to come in and make a proposal that made sense for everyone, particularly the property owners themselves. The project, as you have mentioned, has been in the public domain since April. Um, we had a public hearing, work session, public hearing with the, with the planning commission, we had, have had two publicly televised work sessions with the council. And before I get started into really talking about the project, I think I would like to, for short, I think it's been done, but I would like to really reiterate what this project is not, okay? This project is not Walmart, I've been reading, following the social media, you know, ninety-five percent of the comments, you know, Walmart, Walmart, this is not that, never has been that. This project is not subsidized housing, it's not public housing. So I just want to say publicly, uh, there's a lot of, you know, misinformation, I think, in people's minds and I think it's important that they understand really what Legacy is. So really, what is Legacy of Pecosin? What it is, is the first truly master planned mixed-use community that's been proposed in the city of Pecosin. And this does represent, we believe, the city's last best hope to really do something special. Uh, we agree with everyone here, Pecosin is a very special place and we are very, very happy and pleased to be a part of this and have the opportunity to even be here and ask for your consideration for this project because we think we have an opportunity to create something here that's very special. Um, a lot has changed in the housing market, you know, I guess, you know, I'm in my sixties, when you're in your forties, you think everybody should have an acre of land and, you know, you know, a single house on an acre of land and, and then when you realize, everyone like me, when your children graduate from college, they realize there's really no place for them to live, or when you're like my mother, who is ninety, uh, can't even, couldn't even begin to think about taking care of an acre of land or a big house. You realize that there are many types of housing needs across this country and many types of housing opportunities that heretofore have really not been provided the residents of Pecosin and that's what Legacy does. It also provides some, uh, some retail and commercial opportunities that we think will develop as the neighborhood develops, that those, those retail uses will develop, but again, meant to complement, not to compete with what's here. We want this community to blend into the fabric of Pecosin and we think we've done that. Brandon Currents, who is here with us, who designed Port Warwick, is our architect and land planner, I'll be calling on Brandon in a few minutes. Uh, but we are, you know, we really have set out, we started with the framework of the ordinance that you all passed and it had six very specific objectives that you were trying to achieve when you passed the Plan Development Mixed Use Ordinance. And I'd just like to lead, read those very quickly for the record, just so people understand how, this was our guide when we set about to design this project. Number one, promote a more efficient use of land over conventional development. Instead of wasting all this land and yards that nobody wants to maintain, to gather up that open space and put it in public spaces and provide people, uh, provide people lots and homes that were, that were more easily maintained, less, less maintenance. Secondly, produce superior quality in development, design and construction. And I believe you'll see, you agree with us that we have in fact done this. Third, produce a pedestrian-friendly environment to reduce vehicular trips within the community. This is an entirely walkable community that's intended for people, the number one recreation that people have is walking and this is intended to get people out and walking and meet their neighbors and so there are sidewalks throughout the community. Create an appropriately balanced mix of residential and non-residential uses that respects the underlying land use objectives of the comprehensive plan, which as I mentioned, we are looking at a more of a, a smaller scale, um, specialty type of retail that will complement rather than simply come in and, and compete. Provide alternative housing choices and opportunities, and I think I've spoken to that a number of times and, and I really can't stress that enough, that this is something that we feel has really been missing in the city. And finally, promote the assemblage of smaller parcels to enhance a unified development concept otherwise not achievable through traditional independent development practices. And again, we have done that by taking nineteen parcels of property, some of which have no access and, uh, and, uh, some of which are almost entirely impacted by wetlands and putting them together in a meaningful way that uses those properties and that rewards those families who have been paying taxes on this land all that, all these years. So the plan that you see before you this evening does satisfy all of those criteria. It makes the city money through the creation of new local tax revenues that are roughly double the public service cost, uh, to tune up about 1.2 million dollars in net, uh, net tax revenues, which represents, if by my calculation, if you just take the portion attributable to the general fund, Mr. Figura informed me, that represents over six cents on the tax rate. Now that's not just taxes, that's net revenue gain, taxes over expenses, profit if you will, from the public sector. It protects the environmentally sensitive areas, it protects the integrity of Oxford Run, and I'm gonna call on Donald Davis in a few minutes to talk about drainage and stormwater management, which are very crucial issues. The stormwater regulations changed a year ago and much more onerous and much more challenging for us, but again, very important for the health of the bay. Provide housing opportunities that'll appeal to all age groups and opportunities, as they say, for smaller retail and office opportunities, uh, office users rather. Um, as we indicated during our July twenty-seventh work session that we had with the council, this plan, and as Ms. Vest mentioned, this plan does have a few additional units beyond what was originally proposed and the reason for that is that when we met with the, uh, wetland, the, the environmental regulatory agencies, they expressed to us a very strong preference that we not do what we originally proposed, which was create some, take some uplands that were onsite and turn those into wetlands and create just one wetland area. They've requested or suggested very strongly that we go offsite and purchase wetland mitigation credits in an off, in an offsite wetlands bank. And that's a very expensive proposition, the wetlands mitigation for this project is approaching two million dollars, so obviously to, in order to, to be able to sustain that kind of, that kind of head, it was very important for us to be able to pick up a few more units to try to, you know, mitigate that cost. Uh, so first thing I'd like to do, uh, well, before I really say that, in, in planning this project, there are certain, now, there are certain issues that we know every community rightly has to consider when you look at any project. You've got to consider drainage, you've got to consider environmental protection, community design, traffic impact, fiscal impact, product mix. And we put together a very, very strong team, professionals who have been in this business a very long time, working with the staff to say, how can we best address these and how can we best put forth a plan that really answers in a positive way all of those questions that we think that they're, that the city very rightfully should be asking. So I'd like to start with, with drainage and environmental protection and I would ask Donald Davis with Davis and Associates to spend a few moments and share that with you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name's Donald Davis, members of city council, Mr. Mayor, staff members. I'd like to talk to you tonight about a few areas that, um, I'd like to lay the basis for as far as what we're proposing here would exist at the site and what we're proposing to do with being able to make this site better. First of all, there is about twenty-six acres of wetlands that exist on this site. This wetlands has been confirmed by the US Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, we're proposing to retain a substantial amount of the wetlands that are located here. Of the twenty-six acres that are left, they will all be generally contiguous to the area that you've seen on your conceptual plan. The only areas that we're typically going to remove will be those small fingers that run generally in the east-west direction and those will be areas that aren't quite as, in my opinion, not quite as valuable as some of the larger areas. We're proposing to have water, we're suppo, uh, proposing to have stormwater management that will funnel to the site itself to infiltrate and allow the surface areas to be recharged. Uh, we do have an RPA, an RMA, Resource Management Area and Resource Protection Area that is located along a portion of Oxford Run that locate, is located, uh, generally to the east and west side of where the, uh, map is located there. Uh, the area that runs north and south is not, has been determined not to be an RPA, I'm sorry, not to be a RPA feature, but it is an RMA feature. Um, some of the other areas that we've looked at here are steep slopes, do we have steep slopes? And the only steep slopes do we have, and they're typically defined as being areas that are twenty to twenty-five percent or greater in slope. The only ones that we have are the areas that are immediately adjacent to where Oxford Run is located. Uh, so we don't have any steep slopes here. As far as topographic information on the site, and this has all been surveyed and it's all been determined as far as what the topographical information is, that area has a low elevation under the new standards from Corps of Engineers and the EPA datum of somewhere between seven to eight feet of elevation, but generally it's in the nine to ten range, which in the city of Pecosin is very high. As a matter of fact, when I talk about flood zones, we'll find out that there aren't any flood zones under the new map, maps that were just, uh, adopted previously by city council and by FEMA, who prepared those maps. The only area that we have that is located within a HUD-defined flood zone would be the area that would be almost immediately east of the property and near where Oxford Run is located. So, um, we generally got, uh, some of the best conditions, uh, within the city that we could have. Stormwater management, that's one of the biggest things we deal with today. Um, I'm, doesn't matter if I'm in, uh, Pecosin, if I'm in Chesapeake, if I'm in Richmond. Stormwater management today is mandated by the EPA to the state governments, which then, uh, turns it over to, um, a mandate by the local authorities, both state, I'm sorry, both, um, cities, counties and towns. The new regulations we're dealing with became effective on July the first, twenty-fourteen. Of those new regulations that became effective, we have to now, uh, basically keep our water to ourself. What we're proposing with this development is that we will funnel the stormwater management where possible towards Oxford Run. Some of the areas that I talked about previously that are within the wetland areas, those, we will continue to recharge those areas so that they don't drop. We want to make sure that when the Corps, and it's reviewed by the various authorities, that, uh, they remain intact. We're going to be taking our stormwater drainage from a west side back towards the Oxford Run and where it's on the east side of Oxford Run, we'll be taking it back in that direction also. So we're proposing to use the new standards here for stormwater management and they might be in the way of infiltration, grass swales, uh, BMP such as, um, retaining the water onsite and greatly slowing down the rate of discharge and controlling now the volume, which we've never controlled the volume in the past. So those are generally some of the main things that we are proposing with this development. Uh, also I'd be amiss if I didn't say that we have also looked at sanitary sewer to make sure it's available to the site, all of the site, there will be, um, all sites will come under that criteria. We have city water, which is provided by the City of Newport News Water Works, and we also have fire protection, which will be provided to everyone within the development. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I think there's only one and I just want to reiterate, uh, will this enter, will this at all impact the Oxford Run drainage system?
The Oxford Run drainage system, as it was, is designed, uh, in its pre-development and post-development condition, will actually reduce the amount of runoff in the post-development condition to Oxford Run. We're going to try and keep as much of that water to ourself instead of being, uh, at this point, allowed to drain to Oxford Run. We're gonna slow down, as I said just a few minutes ago, we're not only going to keep it to the less than pre-development condition, but we're also going to make sure that we retain as much as we can onsite by infiltration or other matters.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, to make it clear to me, okay? You're not anticipating increased flow to Oxford Run as a result of this project?
We will not increase the condition to Oxford Run in its current condition, will not. And that's not Donald's requirement, uh, that is the requirement for the federal government, the state government and now the city of Pecosin.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear. Any other questions, Donald? I know drainage is one of the big things that comes up. Any other questions? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. I'd just, I'd now like to call on Brandon Currents, who is our architect and land planner, who designed Legacy, to just spend a few moments, moments and give you some of the philosophy behind the design of this community.
Thank you, Lamont. Good evening, Mayor and the city council. Um, I appreciate you all letting me, uh, present to you. I'm gonna, what I want to do, I'm Brandon Currents, three-three-nine Creek Avenue in Hampton, and I am architect. Uh, I'm gonna try to give a historical perspective of community design and I think it's important so that we'll illustrate how and why we did what we did, uh, here to create the community, which is, will be the legacy of Pecosin. Mixed use seems to be a new term, it is actually a very, very old term. Uh, before World War Two, it wasn't, didn't have a term because all communities were mixed-use designs. Um, every great city and town and village, especially in the South, had everything that we look for now in mixed use. It had open space for the community, uh, it had walkability, uh, but, you know, before World War Two, everything had to be within walking distance, your shops, your home, where you worked, where you bought. A major trip of even ten or fifteen miles away was done once a month, now it's done regularly. Um, World War Two sort of changed the face of everything in that cars happened. Um, so, uh, all of a sudden, what we used to do locally, we could now live in one spot and work thirty, forty miles away, it's very common. That had some negative effects on what we call community and sense of place. Uh, it was harder to know your neighbors, it was harder to, you spend what we call windshield time. Um, so it, it also changed the way we designed communities in that, all of a sudden, we had to, uh, build roads that accommodated cars. Now, cars occupy space, but they don't really care about the community. So architects began to get re-involved and I will point out, before World War Two, I think, uh, almost every community was designed by architects. After that, the traffic engineers had to get re-involved more and the sense of place and community just took a backseat. We, we tried to revitalize it and, and in that, um, we wanted to have people to love where they are, not have to get in the car to do everything. At first, it was a luxury, you could live here, work someplace else and drive. By the sixties, seventies and eighties, it wasn't a luxury, it was a necessity, you had no choice. So we've tried to get this, study this separation of shopping and large lawns and large setbacks where each home becomes its own sanctuary and say, what made our great communities great? And it was actually getting those living functions together again. So, um, we began studying, uh, how to do this and I'm gonna try to go through a little bit on how we create sense of place and create community and bring back what makes a great place to live. The last, uh, community done, really designed this way before World War Two was Hilton Village. And it, uh, we've studied that a lot because it, it tended to have all the elements of a, of a mixed-use community. Uh, it was eighty years later that we finally got, came to fruition with this and did it in Port Warwick. But here's what we did, how's it designed differently? Number one, we, we reversed the trend of designing for vehicles as the number one priority. We call this traditional neighborhood design now. Um, some people call it new urbanism, new urbanism is traditional, uh, neighborhood design with managing cars. So we do not forget about the cars, we very carefully manage them, they are still a high priority, but they never overtake the community, which is the people, the people are, are everything. We do that by creating outdoor spaces that cultivate community. We do that by gathering the setbacks, these large setbacks that, that came into being in the sixties, seventies. We like to get some of that back and not just use it for more housing, but use it for large, open areas, get back to the public green that we used to have in, in the, uh, great towns and villages. Um, and we have that in this. Uh, we also gather the setbacks so we can have community parks, very important to within a walking distance of your house, you have a community park. Now, it's great to do it in your backyard, however, we find that, uh, if you know your neighbors and you can gather and play, you know, close to home in a community atmosphere, it's safer. You know your neighbors, you know, you can see them if anything's going on, you know about it. And this puts neighbors in proximity to one another. Um, so they're not just, uh, friends waving at you in cars, you actually talk to them. Um, we make the streets walkable by narrowing the travel lanes and then providing a six-foot treed buffer along those and providing sidewalks along both sides of every street and scaled streetlights, not the big thing, but these are streetlights that are, you feel comfortable standing against and, and, and walking by. We neck down the intersections so you don't have to cross so much, uh, pavement to get to the other side of the street. Now, in necking down the, the intersections, we also create parallel parking on both sides. That gives further safety to pedestrians, it also naturally control, controls the speed of cars. You don't need signs telling you to go twenty-five miles an hour if you have a fifty-foot wide strip of pavement, you don't look at the sign anyway, you just go. But if the travel lanes are narrow, you've got trees on both sides, you've got, um, parallel parking, you've got the next down intersections, you can't go faster, it is a safer thing. Um, we also create a smaller front yard with all the homes, if you notice, they had front porches. Um, most of them that you saw had no garage in the front, that's because we were doing a full-spectrum housing and some of them have the garage in the back. This gets people on the street, eyes on the street, you know your neighbors, you drink coffee and say hello to them without shouting, you know, two-hundred feet away. We, uh, then use the, this, uh, try to get parks in each, uh, block and try to create cross-connected streets, this creates blocks. A block is an ownership. When you go out and you walk, you walk around your block, easy to get to the next block, to take longer block, who walks? Um, we find that, uh, we are proposing a, um, trail here and walking trails are great, but for every person that walks on a ro, walking trail, a hundred walk down there on the street. It's a huge, um, amenity, so it's one of the major amenities of a neighborhood like this, is its walkability. Once we've done this and created, um, a neighborhood, then we look at the housing. This is a place where you can come in as a, just out of school, as a, um, teacher, a firefighter, um, a young professional and find a place to live. As your family grows, you can stay in the neighborhood and find a place to live. As you get a little older and you don't want all that responsibility that comes with homeownership, you can find a place to live. And then as you get older and you, but you want your own home, maybe the, the alley loaded are the place to live. These aren't cheap houses, they're high quality, some of them are smaller, less maintenance, and we call it full-spectrum housing for an entire community and an entire life size. The downsizers want that high quality and low maintenance and the renters by choice want that. We also have, what's sort of close to my heart, is a little enclave of a special place, that's the cottages. They're very small, some, um, an older person who doesn't need or want a big house can be there, or somebody getting out of school who wants to own but likes the community that you get with the pool close by, that's what I envision for them. The other thing that, uh, if you can, uh, the plan will show, is around the edge, how do you grow communities? This one grows by adjacency. You don't have to go out and way down the road to get to another community. Every place and every opportunity we could, we put a connection to the adjacent property so that if they choose to become part of a community like ours, they can, they're not precluded from it. And we call that, uh, growth by adjacency. And we call that growth by adjacency. So, if we put all this together in a community that is for people, creating a sense of community, that is the legacy of Pecosin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was quite a lust in architecture, that's all I could say.
Thank you, Brandon. The last of our speakers, and we're very excited to have Tom Johnston, who I introduced earlier. Tom is with the Franklin Johnston Group. They're one of the premier apartment developers in southeastern Virginia. And Tom's going to take a few minutes and talk about the apartment homes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. My name is Tom Johnston. I'm the chief development officer for the Franklin Johnston Group. Over the last twenty-five years, my partners and I have developed about thirty-five apartment communities in the mid-Atlantic, about half of which have been in the Hampton Road to region. Our developments are high-quality, we're respected in all the jurisdictions we've developed in, and we're also respected and appreciated by the twenty thousand people that live in the communities that we have developed over the years. But that's not the only thing we do. We also own a management company, and we manage the apartments we develop. And we typically develop them and own them long-term and manage them long-term so that we're able to control not only the quality of the appearance and the aesthetics, but to provide greater service for the people that live there. And that's what keeps them full, and that's what keeps them profitable and making money for our company. So, we're a full-spectrum development management company that focuses only on the apartment The proposed apartments at Legacy will be two hundred units, constructed in six residential four-story buildings. Each will be elevator. As well, we'll have a large community facility. The lack is the operation hub and also the centralized area for the recreational amenities. Our offices will be there, the onsite management and maintenance will be there, as well as a large clubroom facility, large exercise facility. It'll be open twenty-four hours a day. The clubroom can be rented in the evenings or weekends for residents to have special occasions like weddings, graduations, and such. The overall site will be gated so that we will control the people that enter our community on a, not a pedestrian level, because we do want to interact with the single-family homes and the shopping from a vehicular standpoint. Each of the apartments will be handicapped accessible, which means they will be adaptable for anybody that has physical mobility impairments, which is one of the reasons we believe that senior, active seniors will find this housing very attractive. The units themselves will contain nine-foot ceilings, granite countertops, stainless steel GE Profile series appliances. We will have a combination of carpet and ceramic tile flooring. These apartments, if you haven't been in a luxury apartment community in the last five, eight years, you don't, you won't recognize these. These are condo, single-family quality finishes, and as such, will command rents, as I mentioned, from nine-hundred to sixteen-hundred dollars a month. So, why two hundred units? Why not sixty units? Why not a hundred units? Well, in order to develop quality in both the construction quality and in order to have a full operational team onsite working every day, you need scale. You need two hundred units in order to have the economies of scale to create the quality and to create the operational staff that you need to really protect the community and to provide the service for the people that live there. It used to be people said that apartments were called complexes. They were really communities. And as such, that's how the residents are treated, and that's how our management people will handle them. We have extensive credit, criminal background checks on all the residents before they're allowed to move in. So, these are very responsible people that work in the community. They, they have good jobs. They work in it. Now, so who is it that's going to live there? Well, about half of the people that are going to live there are the millennials. You know, they're the nineteen-to-thirty-five-year-old upward, upwardly mobile, educated people that will choose to move back to Pecosin. Some grew up here, some were born here, some were born around here. A large portion will be active seniors. The elevators will provide that access, security, lack of maintenance that everybody wants as they enter their sixties, seventies, nades. And there'll be people that live there that are new to the area, that got transferred to this area because they're working here from another area. And they'll be more fluent, they'll be able to buy three, four-hundred thousand dollar homes, but you can't go from a hotel to a house. You have to find stability in your community before you choose to buy a house and live long-term. So, that's pretty much the industry, what we're proposing for the community here in Pecosin, and the type of people that will live there and be good citizens and good neighbors of Pecosin. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Okay.
I'd just have one. Just to be clear, the apartment units will be rentals. The rest of the property will be private ownership.
Ownership, correct.
Is that correct? So, people own their own houses and cottages, and apartments will be rentals.
That's exactly right. I'd like to point out that in the eighties and nineties, homeownership was over seventy percent. Now, almost forty percent of households in the United States choose to rent, even though a large portion of those households could buy. We're going through a paramount shift in the way people want to live. And a house is not your primary investment now, and young people understand that, and they appreciate it.
Tom, one more question, Lamont. Do these units have fire suppressant systems?
They do. Not only are they fully accessible, but they have a thirteen-R fire suppression system that allows, is designed to allow for no one to be trapped in the unit. The fire will not be put out, but will be suppressed to the extent that a large period of time will pass before the buildings are dangerous. And they'll also contain fire connection systems, pipes, if you will, in each of the breezeways so that the fire department can connect, fight the fire without going inside the building. So, it's safer for the fire department as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You've all been very patient with us, and I will go ahead and wrap it up fairly quickly here because I know there are a lot of folks who'd like to speak. I just would like to really close by saying that by approving Legacy, what you're doing is you have the assurance of how this one hundred acres will be developed. You know what you're getting, rather than a haphazard type of development that may occur over time. You know what you have. To the folks here in the audience this evening, I understand that it's, it's new, it's changed, and it's oftentimes, you know, difficult to see and understand. And I'm glad that we had the opportunity to share with everyone tonight our vision for Legacy. And I assure everyone here, we have no intention of compromising quality of life, quality of construction. This will be a high-quality community. It's will be, it's not a traditional, you know, one-acre lot subdivision. It's different, it's new, but it is, we are not by any means sacrificing quality here. We believe in Pecosin, we're very excited for the opportunity to be here, and we thank you for your time and consideration. I would like to ask Mr. Mayor, if possible, respectfully, would like to have the opportunity to return to the podium in case there are questions or comments that arise during the public hearing that we can answer.
Thank you.
And with that, having been said, my team and I are here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that said, I will open the public hearing. And now's the time for anybody to comment on the overall development plan. Who would like to speak?
Mayor Hunt, council members, Mr. Wheeler. My name is Carol Ann Martin, and I reside at 256 Wood Creek Road. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the legacy of Pecosin Development. As a Big Woods property owner, I am encouraged and hopeful this proposed development will be an opportunity to see something worthwhile done with land that is currently landlocked, has no road or utility system. My family has been paying taxes on some of this property for over a hundred years, four generations. And having been blessed or cursed with this inheritance, this development would allow many landowners an opportunity to get out from under the tax burden. The original investment of this property was one which allowed my forefathers to use the land for the necessities of life. But for many decades, the accumulation of annual tax receipts are the only benefits of ownership. As a lifelong resident, I could speak of the many changes which have taken place here in Pecosin, but tonight I choose to speak of the opportunity this development could bring to the future of our city. It is not just an opportunity for the landowners, but one which will benefit the entire city and all who live here. As I travel to the surrounding areas of Hampton Roads, I continually see ongoing development and change. The legacy of Pecosin is well-planned and would allow Pecosin to prosper in the years ahead for future generations. As we all know, change can be difficult, but the responsibility is up to you, the members of council. I am grateful to the city leaders who had the foresight many months ago to bring the landowners together as a group, and now I encourage you to vote in favor of this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Margaret White. My husband, Ernie, and I live at Ten Hopkins Court, just behind Farm Fresh. We are in favor of the development of the Big Woods Legacy of Pecosin. We are one of many landowners. This property has been in my family for decades. I inherited this land in nineteen seventy-five. That is forty years ago, forty years ago. Way back then, the city wanted development in the Big Woods. They wanted to increase the city's revenue and to add businesses to help share the tax burden of our bedroom community. It has taken a long, long time, but the time is now. We're here. The time is now. This is a good plan. The developer has done a good job. There is a great deal of time, thought, and expense has already been invested by the city as well as the developer to ensure the best interest of Pecosin. The developer has done a great job to try to control the impact to the surrounding property owners. A good neighbor policy is in there. Yes, there will be some concerns. Change always creates concern, but change will affect each of us. However, change is inevitable. Council, you have studied these plans. Legacy of Pecosin is a good plan for our city. It is the best possible location, and the time is right. I am confident, or we are confident, that you will do what is best for our city, and we say yes, we do support this plan. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thay Forrest, Fungo, One Black Oak Court here in Pecosin. Again, I address you. I have a vested interest in this city. As several of you councilmen and many of you sitting in this room, my family goes back hundreds of years. And I have lived here almost all of my life. I've been involved in city government activities since the early nineteen sixties, and so I appreciate the positions that you find yourself in, and I appreciate the public input that you have heard tonight. I'm sorry that some people didn't get advised earlier or couldn't speak to the comprehensive plan, but I am glad they were able to express their opinions as we are able to always do in our government agencies. My father served on council here for nineteen years. My mother retired from the public school system. Both of them graduated from Pecosin High School. I'm going to say something here that will tell you exactly how old I am. I grew up in the closing years of Great Depression, and I spent my childhood on Pecosin Avenue during World War II. I remember when we had no city water and we had no city sewer. We were so happy to see the progress when it came to this city. I remember how many people didn't want either of those two things. I remember when the number of people didn't want the gymnasium that we now have at the middle school, when they didn't want the new high school, when they didn't want the villas, when they didn't want the marina. Most of those projects have turned out for the best good of this city. And my father was involved in many of those decisions. He always felt, as you said tonight, Jean, that you can't look ahead ten years. You must look ahead fifty to a hundred years when you start looking out for the citizens of this city. Progress? I actually embrace progress. I always have. I think that we need it in order to grow. Moderately priced homes, I think we also need that. As a citizen who is tired of cutting grass, I appreciate the apartments also. I like having people that can live in close proximity to one another, young and old, together, and I believe that this development offers that opportunity to many people. The landowners have the right to sell their land. They have the right to be grateful for what you all have done in trying to put this project together. City staff, volunteers, and elected officials, I think you've done an excellent job in what you have done here. I sincerely hope that it can be approved, and I believe it would be a wonderful legacy for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Hunt, distinguished members of Pecosin City Council, Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Wiggins. I'm James Kirby, and I reside at 216 Champions Path, Yorktown, Virginia. I stand before you as a president of the Woods-a-Tab Homes Association, representing our two-hundred-and-forty-four homeowners. I apologize for missing the deadline submission of electronic presentation, but offer a printed version of the slides that we'll refer to. I believe that every member has those already. First, thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns to you and the City Council. As a neighbor to Pecosin and a community, we have three outstanding areas of concern regarding the proposed Legacy of Pecosin project. There is stormwater management and drainage, constructed wetlands BMP plan for the Legacy of Pecosin, and the forty-foot landscaped or naturally wooded perimeter. The second slide represents the current flow of stormwater, as I understand it, within the Woods-a-Tab and the peripheral properties. Within our neighborhood, the water flows in through our lake system, and then it flows through retention ponds and out along Carrie's Chapel and then under Carrie's Chapel Road to the tidal area for discharge. The Legacy of Pecosin Development, our concern is the increased runoff water from the new development through the swales adjacent to the properties that impact, that it will have on the health of our own BMP and associated infrastructure. I'd like to point that out to you, Joe. Basically, the area I'm talking about, back along here, Coach Hill's Road, those homes, there's a swale behind there, and the current topography of the land slopes into that swale from the area that we're proposing this development be in. With the clearing of that land and the density of the property that's going to go in there, I suspect that there's going to be an increased flow of water that will also go into our lakes and through our ponds and across over Carrie's Chapel and discharge that way. And that's a concern that I ask, it has not been addressed with the all that you explore that further. Catch my place here? The larger question, what will it look like after the back section of Legacy of The larger question, what will it look like after the back section of Legacy of Pecosin is completed? Slide three is a closer look at the sample area that I'm referring to. Within these slides kind of represents the flood area that's represented by the 2015 plan that's out there, and you can kind of see that road right there is Coach Hovis Road. And you see that we already are impacted when severe storms occur. And then if you flip to the next slide, Slide four, which is the 2009 flood zone map, you can kind of see the significant impacts that were expected at that time, and our concern is with this development and the clearing of that area, that we'll see an increased flooding aspect in severe weather, and ask that you take that into consideration as well. Slide five represents the main question regarding the topography of the Legacy of Pecosin. I know as we look at the plan, we see the BMP is concentrated in the central area, but if you look at the area that's adjacent, the wedge area associated with the 22 acres of land that was discussed earlier, is the slope of that land to get that water to flow into the BMP there, I think is going to be a significant amount of work. So I'd ask you to dig deeper into that and ask those questions to make sure that, you know, we're all, as neighbors, protected in the event that we are faced with severe weather in the future. My final slide, I would like to address the developer's comments on the perimeter buffer. In these statements there that were provided, I do thank the developer for placing more the intensive commercial multifamily use areas up in the front area of the development. Secondly, I would like to provide some background, the developer's comment that the Woods-a-Tab community already consists of single-family homes backing up the single-family homes. I personally counted up on the plot map and looking at the properties, a total of eighty-three homes within our 244 homes back up to single-family homes presently. It roughly equates to thirty-four percent of the homeowners currently backing up to another home. The developer for our community creatively used open spaces and designed common areas possessed by the Homes Association to provide a buffer for some of our other homeowners. Ultimately, we believe that the maintenance of the forty-foot buffer requirement would be mutually beneficial to the future Legacy of Pecosin residents, along with their neighbors residing in the Woods-a-Tab. This is absolutely critical to the density of the homes, the back section of the adjacent community, and the clubhouse area that we kind of discussed earlier when you talked about the first portion of the public hearing. I know we're not really getting into the zoning aspect, but I would really ask you to consider with the density of homes that are being proposed for that area and the use of the clubhouse area, that a buffer be entertained. And if a buffer is not entertained, then maybe we should revisit, or I should say, you all should revisit the density of the homes that are going to be placed in that area. I'm talking about the wedge area, the triangle back in the back portion there. Another item I just want to clarify is, at the planning commission, the public hearing, the developer was asked to provide what would be the cost or loss associated with keeping or maintaining the buffer requirement without having that waived. And I looked through all the documents that were presented. I never saw that presented in any kind of written format, and I would ask that you explore that question as well, because I don't know if that was fully addressed to you all in those discussions, and that came up during that planning commission public hearing. In closing, thank you for your time. I know that our homeowners from Woods-a-Tab, there are some of us that are present here, and they'll offer their own personal perspective on the Legacy of Pecosin issue. We're good neighbors to y'all. We want to be good neighbors. We shop, and we do a lot of living within Pecosin as well. We want to see Pecosin succeed, and we just want to be mutually beneficial for both parties. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Christine Conrad, 11 Wilson Drive.
Excuse me, I didn't hear the name.
Christine Conrad. Try to keep this brief because it's getting late, and I know we're all tired. I just, I sort of want to reiterate what the gentleman that just spoke said, you know, development is always a subjective thing. Some people love it, some people hate it. It's the council's job and the city's job to make sure that development that's allowed under ordinances proceeds in a responsible manner and is ultimately good for the city. So I'd just like to offer a few comments that are not so subjective, but maybe hopefully a little more objective of things you may consider. The applicant is requesting relief from several ordinances governing setbacks and buffers, specifically front yard setbacks and replacement of landscape buffers within yards. The purpose of the PUDMU is to provide for creative and innovative design to reduce streets and impervious area while preserving the natural character of surrounding lands and open space. The underlying assumption within this approach to development is that by clustering buildings, infrastructures, and amenities, larger surrounding areas and open spaces can be preserved for screening, vegetative enhancement, and recreational use. The PUDMU in and of itself is a relief from traditional zoning requirements. The requested waiver is not consistent with the overall intent of the overlay district and seems to pick the most advantageous development practices from both traditional and non-traditional designs for the project. The result will be four-story apartment buildings located twenty-five feet versus sixty feet closer to Victory Boulevard with less screening and a replacement of required forty-foot landscape buffers with residential yard spaces. The applicant states in their application materials that this development is the first of the kind for Pecosin, and I would definitely agree with that. I urge the council to carefully consider these waiver requests. That was obviously a topic of discussion in the planning commission as well, so an area of concern, in order to set appropriate precedents for future developments with respect to buffers and setbacks and the aesthetic quality of development approved in the city. I have a few concerns about the environmental planning based on the site plan with some of the lots plotted within the RPA. It sounds like the environmental district or the environmental committee is a more appropriate place to bring that up, but I would just say that across the state, standard practices are to locate yards outside of RPA requirements so that you don't have the potential for landowners to misuse these environmental areas or do unauthorized activities within those yards. It may be something that the developer could look into. Lastly, I urge you to ask the developer, recommend to the developer, to provide further justification or alternative site plans to show how they may or may not adhere to the setback and buffer requirements. It's standard practice to provide alternative site plans and many other permit processes, and this may give a better understanding of the economic impacts, feasibility, and overall viability of the development while adhering to the required setbacks and the ordinance as it stands. I appreciate all of your time hearing these concerns, and I hope you'll make the appropriate decision for the city.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Mike Barnum. I live at 404 Coach Hovis Drive in Yorktown. So my house is approximately, if you look at the end of that cul-de-sac down at the end of that road, I'm about right at the end of that circle. And if you look at the representation of that area on Slide number two, and the slides that Mr. Kirby gave you, you'll see that one blue area that kind of cuts over. But if you're right at that corner, it's approximately my house. And so the end of that drain actually ends right there. So it's almost like a sink bowl, if you will. So when that water starts to come from the rains or whatever, it fills up right there, so I see it. So I know that it's very temperamental as far as the waters go. Now, right in back of the house is the woods. When I go back there, it's soggy. I mean, the woods are just, it's damp, it's holding water, you can see it, it's pockets of water all over the place. So it's very easy for me to imagine that if that land was filled up or raised at any given time, that that water is just going to come into my yard, and it's going to fill up. I'm just at a unique spot in this area. So like Mr. Kirby, I would just urge you that as we look into this drainage issue, that you just please assure us as good neighbors that we're going to take care of it the first time and not have to go back and fix something that perhaps wasn't attended to like it should have been when it started. So I urge you to do that. I love Pecosin. I mean, I've been here for fifteen years. I moved here, I was in the military here back in the eighties for nine years, and I just love the city. I do all my shopping here, so I give a lot of revenue, if you will, to the city Pecosin, and I love it. And I understand that there's a lot of change. You guys have a lot of decisions that you have to make each and every time, and this is probably one of the biggest decisions you'll make in the history of your tenure as on the city council, right? When we talked, I was one of the people that talked to the planning council, along with Mr. Kirby from York County that they mentioned earlier, and we did talk about this buffer issue. All the buffers, but generally the buffer behind our homes. And I believe, as we talked about earlier, Mr. Kirby, is that that buffer is beneficial to both of us, both you and York County, to the guys behind us and us, that we have some privacy, that there's a piece of land that those trees stay there, because it's pretty dense trees right there. If you took forty yards, if you walked forty feet back from my house, it doesn't seem like a lot. You know, it's like, I could see it from here, we could look in this room and see where forty feet is, but the trees that would be there, and hopefully they'll be even longer, they won't take out all the trees. We haven't heard how they're going to develop this land. We've all seen areas where they go in and they take the bulldozers and they just level it, because it's easier for the developer to develop that way. When I bought the house in my neighborhood, one of the reasons I bought it because it looked very mature. The trees were there, they were select, they didn't cut down all the trees. I happen to cut down more in my backyard myself, but they left the trees, right? I think that buffer is essential to us to be good neighbors, right? We're not going to fight about this, you know, the actual legacy of Woods. I think it's going to happen. We all know it's going to happen. I think you get to where you're just going to accept it. And I hope and I pray that it's a great thing for Pecosin, it's a great thing for all of us. It's going to change the city. It saddens us a little bit because we like the small-town feel, I certainly love it, but it's going to happen, we know that. But as neighbors, as us, if we please, you know, the developers don't get everything they want. They're getting a lot, but we don't have to give them everything they want. And this one thing, the buffers, I think the other ones you ought to consider as well, but specifically for us, the buffer and the drainage, I just ask for your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Hunt, councilman. First, I'd like to thank you for your statements, your awareness that the decisions y'all are making here as council members are not for you and those that are in this room, but they're for our children or our grandchildren or our great-grandchildren. As a past school board member and chairman, I've had to sit through many years of declining enrollment and state reductions. I know very well how much the city has stepped up and filled in the gap that the state caused in defunding programs and keeping our schools as viable as possible. But when we cut enrollment, when the students leave and aren't replaced with newer young families that have children that are coming in, it's not just, the perception is the classroom's getting smaller, but it's actually the exact opposite. When the student population goes down and the funding goes down, the classroom sizes increase and programs are cut. Teachers have been laid off, programs have been stopped. This is the only thing that I've seen in a single vote that y'all can make a decision to make a change on that. This is one opportunity. I wish that it be double the impact. We've had over five hundred children that have left in the last six, seven years. This is only going to bring in an additional two hundred. I wish it was a lot more. I know that there's other things that are going on, other developments in other areas. The city of Pecosin has got to make room for young families with children, or our school systems will not be the predominant school system on the peninsula any longer. I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I appreciate y'all having the foresight to look forward and to help Pecosin continue to be the place of excellence that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. I'm going to be brief because my bedtime was two hours ago. Steep Cast, eighty-seven Browns Neck Road, and I support the development of the Big Woods. One thing that hasn't come out tonight is Mid-Atlantic and the Big Woods Development Company is a very community-minded company. They give back to the community, and I really think it's the right group of people to help Pecosin at the right time. And of course, as school board chair, I'm very concerned about the student population, the state funding that's tied to that, and as our schools go, I believe the city goes, and I really believe this is the right thing to do at this time. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Monica White, seventeen, Hunts Neck Road. And bear with me for a minute because I did a lot of scribbling over there. Some things I've marked out as I've listened. I know change has to come. I'm not opposed to that. What I saw there looks like Port Warwick, which started out, I thought, that's kind of interesting, as I'm getting a little older, my kids are a little older. I miss the planning commission things because both my husband and I work, and our kid is very active. She's every night somewhere, Civil Air Patrol, she's the second lieutenant out there. Yeah, I'd like to have stayed in ROTC in Pecosin, we never got it. I would have loved that for her. But living next door to the Air Force Base, I don't know why, we never had it, but we did. So I keep busy with her and miss these things. So I'm somewhat uneducated coming in, so I try to pick up quickly. Speaking of Port Warwick, looking at it when that came in, I just quickly over there picked up Zillow. Very nice condos, seventeen hundred fifty-five square feet, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, gorgeous. Sold in 2007 for three hundred ninety-two-five, on the market now for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. What's going to happen with that down the road? You look at, we want to bring in kids. I know we need to bring in kids. I work in York County schools. I know that every student you lose, you lose probably about ten thousand dollars from the state. I know we've got to have that. I'm not sure, as someone said over there against the wall with me, having places that don't have a lot of yard, you know, the older people, like says, I get older too, my acre cutting grass is getting a little tiresome too. But if you want the kids, they need places to run, and most of those young families are looking for safe neighborhoods to have a yard for their children, not an apartment building. I'm not opposed necessarily to the building, and I think that the landowners have a right to sell the property because they have paid taxes on it for years. I'm just not sure it needs to be that developed. Now, on the retail front, having retail, the little boutique shops, which we've had, and now we've got at least ten buildings that are empty, don't really function unless you've got something like a base, unfortunately. Walmart, Whole Foods, something like that, something that's going to bring in the guests, and then they see the boutiques and go, oh, let me go in there. There's got to be an anchor store. I haven't heard anybody say, except your one guy that also made the blurb about four to six earlier, say something about a grocery store. We do have two. Food Lion came in, almost ran out Farm Fresh. It's evened out because they have different things. So I'm not sure how you're going to hold the retail, especially when we have a higher business tax than surrounding cities. I know I said it before, last time I talked, and kind of felt like I got patted on the head, like, oh, you're so pretty. You know, we did away with a boat tax, and I'm now a boat owner since I spoke last. I would gladly pay a boat tax to give business owners a break. People like my dad who have a small home improvement having to pay four dollars and fifteen cents per hundred of his tools. I almost put some of these people out of business or send them to York County, where it's cheaper to run their business. So if we really are serious about bringing in business, we need to look at helping our startups and our people that are in their homes versus bringing in big retail. Hobby Lobby started in a garage. That's where we need to start. Townhomes that are currently for sale now, I know they said the new ones would be two hundred, two fifty, they're running two hundred thousand that are already built. Those people won't be able to sell their houses for that, so they're going to take a huge loss, because why would you buy that when you have a new one? So something else to consider. Single-family homes, my house, what you tell me it's worth, isn't going to be worth that when there's new houses to purchase. So another thing. And the last thing I have to say, because I'm trying to keep it short, is directed to you, Mayor Hunt. I kind of took offense earlier when you said mob rule, because you really, whether you intended to or not, it sounded to me like something our president has said as to, basically, I'm going to do what I want to do regardless of what you think. Whether that was your intention, I don't know, but that's how it came across. It really came across, again, like I'm being patted on the head, and I do not appreciate that, because, I mean, mob rule, mob rule, the mob, is who put you in office. And they're the I mean, mob rule, mob rule, the mob, is who put you in office. And they're the people you're supposed to be representing. And I do feel like coming here, it's more like a pony show, like the decisions are already made in your heads, much like the first vote that went through, really didn't seem to matter what we said. And again, I miss the planning commissions, you know, but I do have a life. But the mob, I'm sorry?
None of us do, ma'am.
Yeah. Well, but some still have young kids.
We are all busy.
Yes. And we do the best we can. And going to the technology front, you know, most of us, when we're sitting at our kids' events, you know, York County Sheriff's Department has a page. Make a page. Put it out there, because we can't sit and wait for it to scroll through on the television channel.
After, after-
I don't have daily press.
After the meeting, can you brief her on the pages that are available for information?
I think you need to brief everybody, because I'm not the only one missing it.
Okay. Well, anybody that would like, anybody that would like to stay, we'll brief you on the page.
I mean, just, just put it out there. Put it, put it out there so we can hear it. But, you know, like I said-
I'm sorry if you took offense, but I've understood your comments, and I appreciate them.
Okay. Well, like I said, I wasn't the only one to take offense to it, but, you know, we voted you in. We can change the vote.
Ma'am, it's, I understand your emotion. I really do. Thank you.
There's my-[676.87][676.87](LAUGHING)
Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Alan Moody. I live on Browns Neck. I started this day at work at 5:30 in the morning. I haven't been home yet, so I'm hungry and tired. I'm a product of a Hampton education. I know that's to the chagrin of a lot of y'all. My oldest child is, will be 25 this year, and he graduated from Hampton. My parents still live in Hampton. I chose to move here 11 years ago. I have two young kids that are in the school system now. The school system is very important to me. If adding kids matters, then I want to add kids. But it's not just adding a number of kids that gets the school system where it needs to be. You have to have engaged parents. That's why this school, let me rephrase that. That's why, that's one reason why this school system is so successful, is the engaged parents, like all the engaged people behind me. My worry is the 200 apartments that are going to be for rent. I've rented in my life. I know how it is to rent. You are not as engaged when you're a renter. You can come and go from here at any time, whether it's a year lease, whether you break the lease, you can leave. When you're a homeowner, you're invested. You're here. You're engaged. I want the landowners to succeed. I want y'all to sell your property. I want the development to succeed. But I want to bring the right people in. That's my concern. Not just a number, but a right people to fit that number.[801.68][801.68](APPLAUSE)
Yes, ma'am. Actually, yes. You're already heading up, so.
Hi, my name is Channing Price. I live at 256 L Hunts Neck Road. I just have a concern. Seems to me we've got to invite 500 homes, which means 500 families possibly. We mentioned the retail part in this establishment here. Do we know how much those retail parts are, retail buildings are going to rent for? Does anybody know that?
No, right now.
Okay. Okay. So, but we know the homes are going to go from, or the apartments are going to go from 900 and up. I'm just concerned, because we do have so many retail spots available at this time, do we know if the amount of people that are going to come in this establishment will support the two grocery stores that we already have, plus a possible something else, and the other businesses that we have here? I mean, has anybody run those numbers? Are we going to put out anybody's job that they currently have, that their families are currently supported by, that work in this town by bringing in this, is what I'm concerned about?
I understand your concern.
I've lost my train of thought right then, but that is a general concern. And I know there are several of you that know several of these business owners. I'm concerned, what if something doesn't succeed and it runs something out? We know the owners of these shopping centers that are going to sit there, you know what I mean? And I am concerned for them. Just wanted to know if that has been a concern, if they are in support of this, or, you know?
It is something that we've considered, but we'll get to that when we get to the council comments.
Thank you.
All right. And, yes, ma'am.
Shannon Daurimpel, 4 Handsome Drive. Please bear with me. I've got tons of random scribbles as people were talking. I just had a couple of questions, but first, I just want to let you know, I am not a Pecosin native. I did not have family here for hundreds and hundreds of years. I am from San Diego, California. I am from one of the biggest cities that you could ever come from. And we moved to Virginia because of military, and honestly, I thought I was moving to a black hole. Like, I was never going to get out of this horrible, horrible place. I lived in Virginia Beach, by the way, not here at first. And then we did our research. We wanted a better place for our kids, better school systems, lower crime, lower population, someplace where we could really get involved. And we found Pecosin. And now, five years later, I have been in two school PTOs. I remember you. You were great. Thank you. I am the PTO president at the elementary school. I am on the board of my son's football team. I mean, this is the town where you really can get involved. And I, I took a little bit of offense to the gentleman who did our history lesson, when he told us that this place that they're going to build will give us a sense of community. We have a sense of community.[1014.01][1014.01](APPLAUSE) I cannot imagine a better place to live in Virginia. I love this place. And I do think that y'all do have your minds made up already, that we're adding something, which is fine, but I don't think it needs to be that big. And as far as the gentleman who said that the apartments have to be 200 in order to keep them up, maintain a full-time staff, all of that, I was an apartment manager in San Diego. I managed a very nice luxury apartment, two bedrooms, $2,000 a month. Beautiful apartment homes. 50 of them. I worked full-time. So, you can. It does not have to be 200 apartments. Something somebody already hit on, what happens to the older home values? Homes here are selling for around 300,000 as like a baseline, pretty much. What happens to those? When new homes come in, and they're only 350,000, and they're brand-new, our older homes, oh, gosh, we're going to take a huge hit on those. Obviously, I'm thinking we're going to need to add more police, more teachers, more fire department. I would assume, if you're adding 500-something new homes, you're going to have at least 1,000 new people. How many more police officers are we going to hire? How many more teachers are we going to hire? Which is great. I love all those people. They're wonderful. But when you're talking about our profits annually, did we look into how much we're going to pay all those new people, or maintaining the roads, or like maintaining trees, streetlight, whatever? Like, is that part of our profit? Did we already take that out? Or have we not taken that out yet? Because doing the math, if we hired 12 new teachers, which is three at each school, just, you know, just looking at it, and they each made 30,000 a year, or five new police/fire department making 30,000 a year, you're approximately at 500,000. Approximately. And that's only if you hire that many. That would take a really big chunk of your money there. Also, with the gentleman from the history lesson, I'm so sorry, I can't, I, whatever you want. When he was talking about the new community and adjacent, and if they choose to be a part of the community, they're right there. I didn't like that. If you choose to be a part of our community, I know there's a lot of talk about move-ins, but I didn't find it that way here. I was welcomed, and I loved it. And with new people, I think I would still be welcoming with them. Obviously, I have no right to not be. But if they choose to be a part of us, they're new here, why would they choose us or not choose us? That just seemed awful. And also, just one time, when I stopped in the police station, I don't go there often, but I stopped in for a PTO thing, asking them to stop by the school, which is great. See, small town, you can have a police officers at a trunk and treat. I got into a conversation with a gentleman that opened the door for me, and he was talking about the fact that our police officers can barely afford Pecosin place. So, when the, one of them was talking about millennials moving into these places, 19 to 35, there is no way they are going to be able to afford these apartments, let alone these townhomes. My friend over there is a teacher. On her salary now, she would not be able to afford. And she's a Newport News teacher, by the way. She doesn't work here. A lot of that, no, we can't afford that at all. Let me see if I've got anything else here. Oh, and I have a question for you. How will construction affect traffic for current residents? I'm assuming one of you guys has that answer.
Well, he said he would readdress whatever questions got left, so.
Do you know? Do we have any idea?
We do. But we'll let him address it. We are aware of what he's proposing, but we'll let him do it.
Like, to us, or later with you guys?
No. He'll, he'll address it.
Oh, right now, when I sit down? Oh, got it. I'm so confused. I'm sorry, it's past my bedtime, too, and my kids-[1287.65][1287.65](LAUGHING)
All of ours. Thank you.[1290.33][1290.33](APPLAUSE)
I'm about to fall asleep, too. My name is Mandy Philbeck. I live at 1 Huntsshire Lane, Pecosin. I have more questions than answers after listening and watching all this. Y'all want to do this to provide more services to our community, but what, what exactly, what kind of services are you looking to provide to the revenue that we're getting from this development? And how much does Pecosin really need? Not how much does Pecosin want, it's how much does Pecosin need? Because we, most of us want to keep this a small community. Also, in the environmental analysis, I never heard it mentioned about the wildlife, you know? This area is teeming with American eagles. American eagles, if you didn't know, are still protected animals. You cannot move their nests. You can't transport them. If they're there, they've got to stay there. Let's see. And also, the, just because you built it, what's the probability that people are going to come? Has there been any sort of a study or analysis comparisons done with similar communities and similar populations that, that say that, oh, yeah, we're, we're going to build it and they'll come? And what happens if they don't come? Are we more, in more trouble financially? And, as a developer, but he, he says, land is being wasted when it's not developed. Some along those lines. I don't believe that. I'm a Daisy Girl Scout leader. We teach our young kids resources wisely. Trees are important. They protect the dust left from flood. They offer shade, offer oxygen, you know? We start knocking down all the trees. It's, it's opening Pandora's box, I believe, in Pecosin. What, if we start here, then And also, the recreation area that someone spoke about in the development, is that going to be open to the public as well, or is that going to be just for the gated community? We're losing our, our trail, so where do we, where can we go to get a nice walk through the woods, other than the city park, which isn't as dense as there and pretty, and you can see as much wildlife? I really am, am against this immensely. I don't think there's any reason to, I think there's a more creative way. You can bring, use, use the land that these people want to sell and, and make it some sort of touristy thing. Make it a botanical garden, where people can have weddings, and they got farmers' markets, or something that'll bring tourists in, and like somebody said, and then get them out, you know? We could, you know, the community, we, we love our community, you know? We would help clean up any mess or anything. But this is going to cause a lot of pollution, and it doesn't match Pecosin, honestly. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
But, yeah, did y'all do any environmental analysis on wildlife, or any analysis on comparison study?
I'll let them address that. Yep. I'm going to actually, soon as, soon as we're done with this, I'll let them readdress. I've got a list of questions here.
Thank you very much.[1505.01][1505.01](APPLAUSE)
Yes, ma'am.
Sky Ellenwood, 7 Cathy Drive. Again, according to the gentleman, he said that this project would help the quality of life in Pecosin. I personally don't have a problem with the quality of life in Pecosin. I chose this. I was 22 years in the military, came here 10 years ago, chose it because of the quality of life, because of the way the community was, and what I could give my children in this town. This, I don't see that as following the quality of life in Pecosin. And I understand, I understand that there's change. I get that. I was in the military for 22 years. Do you not think there was change in the military? There was. I can embrace change, but not like this for a small-town home-filling. This is too much. I don't agree with this. And as my friend had stated earlier, I am a teacher in Newport News. I can't afford that. I can't afford a $1,600 apartment or a $400,000 home. The house right next to me, they just remodeled it, and they couldn't sell it. They were trying to sell it for 400,000. They couldn't sell it. You're going to have a bunch of empty homes, because you couldn't even do an older home that was remodeled beautifully. Wood floors throughout, granite countertop. They couldn't sell it.
Thank you.[1594.61][1594.61](APPLAUSE)
Janice Powell, 306 Powhatan Drive. We're three hours into this. I know there's a lot of people that would like to go home, maybe get some late dinner, but I, for one, embrace the fact that change is inevitable. It's going to happen. I think what we're seeing here tonight, and hopefully, Mr. Mayor and all the rest of you, what you're seeing in front of you and in the overflow rooms, and what you're not seeing on social media tonight, is that there is a huge outpouring of opinion going on, not just about this particular subject, but everything that's happening in our city. And I think if nothing else, this has awakened our citizenry to understand that we need to be more involved. And I, for one, want to say, shame on us, that we all missed the opportunity to participate during the planning commission process. I think it's time that we all perhaps accept some responsibility for not being aware of what went on earlier this year, but at the same time, I would respectfully suggest that the city needs to look at alternative ways to communicate with people about what's going on, particularly when it's something as absolutely significant and huge as this development. We all deserve to be informed, and, and an ad in the newspaper doesn't always constitute it. And I would suggest to our city manager and to our senior city staff that we look at alternative ways to communicate with our citizens, if it's through the utility, the utility bill or something, so that we know what is going on. Now, in reference to what everyone else has said, I have absolutely no doubt that Mid-Atlantic is going to do a wonderful job. They do beautiful work. There's no question. I have been, I've been a recipient of their work. I'm an interior decorator. I sell blinds and shades to people that buy their homes. I love it. But we have to take a look seriously at what the future of our city is going to look like with an engaged involvement and communication with our citizenry. We lost a huge opportunity at White House Cove. We have an opportunity here that may or may not be exactly what was presented to us this evening. But going forward, we have so many more opportunities that are going to come before us. And my suggestion would be that we engage in a comprehensive, public participation review of the city's comprehensive plan, not to revisit it or change it, but just to let everyone know, this is the view from now until 2028. You guys speak now or forever hold your peace, because we're thinking 50 years and 100 years down the road, engage your citizens. We had 10% of the citizenry respond to a petition that was full of falsities, that I actually participated in creating, because no one knew what was going on. We have over 1,500 people that have responded in less than 72 hours to an online petition for no Walmart or Walmart-ish retail and no low-income housing on this development. Abraham Lincoln said, "Everything on the internet is true," right? It's not. It's not. But you can- It's not. But you can generate activity and conversation by engaging people and letting them know what's going on. And I just beg of you to please consider the fact that these people are, are the citizens of Pecosin, and they have a voice, and they deserve to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One else?
Bonnie Watkins, driver, 921 Pecosin Avenue. Mr. Mayor and honorable members of City Council. I am chairman currently of the Pecosin Planning Commission, but I've chosen, and I do stand by my vote, I want folks here to know that, but tonight, I'm gonna speak as a citizen, citizen of Pecosin. And I have been here many years. I'm not gonna give any history lessons, but I've been here a long time. I have seen a lot of history. But what I'm gonna say to you is this. People have been coming to Pecosin since the sixteen hundreds, and I can guarantee you that every, every generation that endured a great amount of change fought it tooth and toenail. My ancestors were right there fighting it, because they naturally loved to argue. It's a, it's a trait that we have. But change occurred. And the thing that's a marvel to me, and I'm gonna say this to the folks here in the audience, particularly the ones who have said that they have come here in the last fifteen, ten years. People in Pecosin and the governing bodies must have done something right, because the, the changes that occurred didn't deter any of you from coming here. Hasn't deterred me from staying here. I want to stay here. That's why, and I love Pecosin. I, I love it, because this is where my ancestors have stayed since the sixteen hundreds. I'm, I'm a dinosaur. I'm one of these old Pecosin natives that bores the newcomers to death with all the things that I've seen, but I have seen them. And I'm not gonna deny it. I've seen ten thousand people come to this community. Now, tell me, that's not a lot of change for one little, little woman to endure. I have seen it. And a lot of it I didn't like, I gotta be honest. I, I thought it would be detrimental to our community at times, but I'm gonna admit I was wrong about that. I think we have had some very good people come to our community who have added a great deal to our community, and it makes me proud of it. And I like to see discussion. I know, as, as a planning member for almost twenty years, every time we've reviewed the comprehensive plan, we have all but begged people to come out. We hold numerous public sessions for public input, and we have very few come out. So I'm going to say to all of you, I encourage you to do that. There's no secrets on planning commission. There are no secret motives. Why in the world would any of these people sitting here, or anybody in the governing bodies of Pecosin that I know, they all live here, why in the world would we want to inflict something upon ourselves that we think would be detrimental? I, I may not be Einstein, but I certainly have enough reasoning powers to, to, to know that that's not what any of us in this room really want. I've seen a great change. We, in this community of late, we have had to deal with a failing economy, which has been a national thing, and being a small city, that has hit us real hard. And it's made everybody in city government have to really come up with some things that will help keep this city afloat. And we want to do that. I can tell you this, and I will say this one, one last history lesson. I really don't want to go back. I've heard my husband say many times, if he's home listening tonight, he, he will know that this is very true. I'm not telling tales on him. He, he'll say, "I would like for things to go back like they were, when I grew up." Well, I disagree with him. I don't, I don't want that inconvenience. I like what, what we have here in our community, and I think, I think overall, we all do. But there is an instinctual thing within all of us, including me. I'm not talking about just the folks sitting here. I'm talking about myself as well, that we, we fight change. And some change isn't good. But I'm gonna tell you that I really strongly feel tonight that this change is good. It will be tweaked, I'm sure, many, and it has been since we have seen it and viewed it, with suggestions and recommendations from people that we have on our planning commission. It, it's, it's not, it's not going to, to be something that, ten years down the line, I think that we're all gonna say that it is a good thing. And I, I fully believe that. And maybe I'll be proven wrong, and if I am, y'all look me up ten years from now, and you just tell me you were wrong. And, and you know, I'll say, "Okay, I was wrong." But closing, and I'm gonna close, because the hour's late, and I, too, have been up since five, and will be up again tomorrow, because I work three jobs, so I can stay here. I want to stay here. It's hard. There are other localities that I could have left and gone to, probably. I work one job in Williamsburg, and there are places there that I could probably afford, and the tax base is bigger. But I choose to stay here, because I love my community, and my family loves it. They've always loved it, and they've given a lot to it, and I'm not gonna abandon it. And I'm a strong advocate of property owners' rights also, and I want to say that, because sometimes I've heard the same thing over and over when people come out to oppose development. And that is, that they don't want, they don't want that person to do something with that land that they own, and they pay taxes on it. They might not want the trees cut down. They, they don't like the way, you know, the driveway looks, or something like that. But ultimately, if you don't own that property, you can't control it. And I, I can tell you, that's happened personally to me, right where I live today. And, and I didn't have the money to buy the lots around me, so houses are there. But you know what? I'm still there, too, and it doesn't bother me. Now, I'm gonna ask y'all something in this audience, and I want you to be honest. I wanna look at, look at the audience, and I want to ask y'all, how many of y'all live in developments right now? Now be honest. How many of you live in developments? And I'm talking about here in Pecosin. All right, come on. I know you live in one. I can look at y'all and tell, because I know. Don't, don't, I mean, you know, just, okay. Well, I'm gonna tell you something. I will assure you that every one of y'all that live in a development, there were people, and even a lot like I live on, there were people at one time who sold that property, and somebody didn't, probably didn't want that property sold. They didn't want developers to come in and make the very subdivisions that y'all live in. Now, it would be a pretty bad thing, I guess, for y'all, in these subdivisions and places, if the evil developer hadn't come in, he made some money on you, but you have a place to live. You have a place to live. White, White's Terrace was the only development that I knew, growing up here. So look around and see how many more are here. And, and most of y'all are in them. So, you know, think about it. Okay? And I appreciate you letting me say my history lesson, but I hope you will consider what is best for this entire community, for our future, and it does have to include growth.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Cherie Wright, P.O. Box 2001, Pecosin. Counsel, I totally have gone to the meetings. I appreciate everything. I've listened. I actually, at the first meeting, talked to the architect, and I, he had mentioned something about being pet-friendly. So I asked him, I said, "So are you putting in a dog park?" And he said, "No, they, there's issues with that." I said, "A community center at your, um, community center, maybe you could have a food center in there for the aging, if you've got a few of the elderly people that want to just not have to do a meal themselves. Maybe you could have a, you know, a cafeteria that they could buy a meal plan from." And so, in asking questions like this, I found out that they designed the development to what they were asked to design. And I appreciate that. It's a beautiful development. Fort Worth, just like that, beautiful development. But unfortunately, I think what they were asked to design is not what the city people have asked. What I would like to say is, Henry sells cars. He sells wonderful cars, but he does not have anybody walk on that lot, and he points to this car and says, "You must buy this car." He gives them options. We have not been given any options. You've given us one plan, and one plan only to choose from. What I would like to say is, table this community, and come up with at least a second option for this community. We've talked about, we need more students in our schools. What's gonna bring parents here with their children? We had, and still have, hopefully, the best school system in the area, but we need more than just the school. We need an activity center for these kids. We need a learning center for these kids, that they, we can help them with their education. Take some of this area, use it, make a community center for these children. That will make these three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar homes that we already have up for sale, with land, with yards. They'll come and they'll buy those homes. Are aging, or don't want that big lot. They don't want to cut that grass. Yes, make a smaller community center here, where we can have that lower, smaller house for that elderly person. When I talk with Brandon, he says he designs those, but this was not what we asked him to do here. Let's look at it again. Let's think about what we need. We need seniors to be able to sell their big homes with lots of yard, to go into a community that has a smaller cottage-type community, have a cottage, a, a community center that has a meal plan, that they don't want to go buy a whole bunch of food and have a lot of leftovers. They can just go buy a meal plan. There are plans out there. There are communities out there that do this. Let's get an activity center, a learning center for our children. We can still have some townhouses, but not three and four hundred dollar, thousand dollar homes that are gonna drop the cost of our houses that we already have built. Let's move in people into those homes, let the elderly move into this area, maybe. What I'm saying is, you've given us exactly one plan to look at. It's not the fit for the Pecosin. We know it's gonna, it would work, but is it the perfect fit? No, you're asking me to take my foot and put it in her shoe. It's not a perfect fit. So maybe, table this right now. Mr. Southall, you're the most conservative I know on this board. You always ask the best questions. My question to you is, is this the fit that you would want for the community? I think we need at least a second option, and that's what I'm asking of you. Give us an option.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, before you leave, okay, I, I did not catch your name. Can I get it, please?
Cherie Wright. Cherie Wright?
Cherie Wright, thank you.
Got me up to the speaker's stand, huh?
Did the same thing.
Can I have a quick one?
Yes, sir.
I think it's time, really, to end it. You've had good days. I was born in Pecosin over eighty-four years ago, in Huntsnae. The Lakes of Pecosin was our family farm. We farmed it. Through the years, well, quickly, let me say. We, we were going farm Pecosin, it was going up to the, uh, waterworks, where the hill is, all of Pecosin District. People up there came to us and said, "Hey, we're farmers. We can't stand this." Up around Bethel, the Taylors and the Wilsons and all them. They said, "Fine, we'll let you out." The people up in Kirsh Chapel, all around there, said, "We don't want to be in Pecosin with you folks." They said, "Fine, we'll draw the line around you." People in that area said, "We don't want to be in Pecosin." They said, "Fine, we'll vote on it." We became proud members of, of a city of Pecosin today. Times change. We had, why don't people deserve a good place to live? On our farm today, it was probably forty-eight, fifty houses down there. But time moves on. People that own land should have a right to sell it and get their money. Otherwise, you ought to give them the money and stop the taxes. So I think we should stop the debate and move on. And I'll tell you, I, I haven't always been on the winning side, but I've been on the winning side, being in the market and being in Pecosin. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm a move-in, and one of the, or whatever you call it, since ninety-two. And one of the reasons why I moved here was because of the school system. My kids are grown now, and so I'm at a, a place where I'm just really enjoying it, you know? It's quiet, safe. I can go, go out at nine o'clock at night and walk my dog and not worry about it. And I just worry about, you know, what kind of, um, this is really big. It's really big. And I work outside of Pecosin. I don't have the opportunity of working inside of Pecosin. So when I leave the cities, the surrounding cities, and drive down Victory Boulevard with all the trees, and it's like, poof! It's like, there's a, there's a little town at the end of those trees, and it's just very refreshing to be away from the surrounding cities. And this is so big, it's starting to look like a city here, and I don't have the energy to move, and now I'm not sure if my place is even gonna be as valuable as it is now. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
And I hope, I hope it stays small and nice, you know, for my, for my grandkids.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
You need it again? Brian Moore, 114 Hudson's Road. Some change is not good. I just heard that. I don't own any of the property that's involved in this. I really don't have a horse in the show, as far as that goes. I feel for the fact that being taxed on unused property is, is quite a burden. My family has property that, that we're taxed on, that we don't do anything with. I feel that coming into Pecosin, as, as was just stated, we have a, a, a natural buffer right there that separates us and makes us kind of unique. I know, I know, I know some of the landowners here, personally, very well. I have nothing against them developing their property. That's their choice. They should be able to do what they want to do with it. I'm just not quite sure that this is what Pecosin needs, this particular development that we have. Now, I heard somebody ask, everybody that lives in developments, raise your hand. Anybody here in Pecosin that lives in a three-story apartment building, raise your hand. Now, I don't even have to look, because there is no three-story apartment buildings in Pecosin. This is a big change. Change sometimes is not good. We just heard Now, with the, with the property taxes, uh, on these properties that are, that are not really able to be used, I think we need to look into, I think Pecosin, I think the point that Pecosin is at now, is the point, we, we need to start thinking about green space a little bit. Now, I'm not a tree hugger, but, but I can tell you this. Pecosin is pretty much developed up. We've got the big woods left here, and a couple little parcels here and there. And other than that, there's not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot there. I mean, we're I mean, we're covering up wetlands, and we're saying we're buying wetlands over here, and we say, you know, "That's great." No, we're destroying whatever wetlands are left, we're filling them in, and we're buying some piece of land somewhere, and we're saying that's just compensation. Now, the thing I think that y'all, one of the things y'all need to look into is, being that we're at the point we are with the development, why do we, I know you guys want more tax dollars, and you want to hire more firefighters, and more police officers, and you want more trucks, and whatever, but where we're at, why are we taxing these people to the point where they have to sell this land, or it's an undue burden on them, my family included? It's an undue burden. If you're not doing anything with that, you're not riding up and down, there's not a bunch of people living there, why are you paying all these taxes on that property? We need to look at that. It may be the point in time that we could take a little of this extra weight off of these people who want to keep this green space that we all like and enjoy, and when we come into Pecosin, yeah, we see the green trees coming in, and boom, there's your little town. Okay. As far as the schools are concerned, every time I look at the analysis, the schools, our school systems are at the top. Everybody here knows that. Everybody moves here for that. The low enrollment, we talk about low enrollment, "Oh, gosh, the sky's going to fall." No, the sky's not going to fall, and the low enrollment just may be, and I'm not a genius, but I can tell you this. I know, just in a few minutes of thinking, I can figure out why, one reason that the enrollment may be low. Now, all these people moved to Pecosin, they raised their kids, they went through the school system. How many of those same people that love this town and love the feel of this town said, "Hey, you know what? I'm from Arizona, and the military brought me here, but you know what? I like it here. This is a great town." And they sit down right here, and they'll be here until the day they die. And when they die, and we all got to die, when they die, that house will go on the market, and somebody will buy that house, and they'll probably have a bunch of kids, and they'll put them right back in the system. It's a cycle, okay? It's just like your global warming. It's a cycle. Ain't no global warming, it's a cycle. The picture that I saw up here, the picture that they showed is Fort Worth. It's a concrete jungle. It is not Pecosin. Maybe y'all saw something different, maybe all the people in this place saw something different, but what I saw on that is not Pecosin. That's not the Pecosin I came from. I know Pecosin has changed throughout the years, I agree with that. At what point do we say enough? Because we're going to become just a part of everything else. That's where we're headed. I kind of felt like everybody up here pretty much had your mind made up from the get-go, from the very first of the meeting. Okay, let's just pass this thing on through. I think we need to stop, and we need to think. Y'all are elected officials. Y'all are supposed to be looking out for the people of this city. Is this the best you have for this city? I don't think it is. I'm all for development. If they want to develop their land here, that's fine. I think we should stay in lines with what we have always traditionally done. We do not need to make this change. Why would we make this change right here? Why do I need a four-story apartment building when I come into Pecosin? Hey, welcome, what we going to do with the sign down here? We got a sign down there that says, "Welcome to Pecosin." It looks very quaint, it looks very homey. What are we going to do with that? I guess we just pull that thing up. Because now we're going to have a bunch of tall apartment buildings. Here's Pecosin, this is the new vision. I don't agree with it. It's the wrong direction. I feel like it's being pushed down on us by HUD, and I don't know, I may be speaking out of turn, but I believe that there are laws in place that say there has to be certain types of affordable development. And I see you grinning and everything, but you may know what I'm talking about, maybe some other people in here know. Even if something's being pushed down your throat, I don't think you have to comply. I think what we need to do is put this project on hold, and I think you need to look at all, do a survey. Do a survey. Put this thing on hold. Let's see what the people of Pecosin want. Not what the developer wants, not what y'all want, let's see what the people of Pecosin want, because that's who y'all work for. Every one of y'all work for Pecosin. And this is government. This is government right here, where we come and we speak our mind, and we put it out there. And I'm putting it out there as clear as I can, guys.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jean Sweeney. I live at 308 Coach Hovis, the Woods of Tab. And Mr. Barnum and Mr. Kirby, our president of our homeowners association, remarked on the concern that I have, which is a drainage issue. The garden plots would probably start where it's behind my house, and we have a drainage problem. I have pictures. Can I show you these pictures?
You can give them to Judy, and she'll pass them down. That way, everybody has them.
These are the pictures of the backyard. This is on her and Floyd. And my concern is the drainage in the runoff. I want to make sure that the BMPs are looked into with this legacy. That's my main concern. And I believe Mr. Barnum was issued this, addressed this issue as well, today, and Mr. Kirby. So please, please carefully look at the drainage, because it affects our home and a lot of flooding. And that's not even, I mean, I've got a bunch of them, a bunch of pictures to show you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening again. I'm BB Laborte, and I live at 106 Terry's Run in Yorktown, in the Woods of Tab. And I want to piggyback on the concern about drainage, and that really is a main item for us, because again, it's unknown, except that you and Pecosin know what an issue for drainage can be, and we just don't want to make the problem worse. So I want to go on the record about my concerns about how improper drainage can negatively affect all of us. I have not seen any of the detailed drainage plans that were referred to this evening. I want to be assured that draining for this project is addressed not only as an individual standalone project, it's just this legacy project, but in the whole, to include the other projects being built in Pecosin that will drain in a similar fashion in the same area. And that includes the fountains of Pecosin currently being built by Food Lion, the future development that may go in on the north side of Victory Boulevard, as well as any other development on the plot of land on about 200 with, on the 200 block of With Creek or so. So I ask that you look at it completely, and not just look at just this one area. I ask that if the plans don't already specify it, that the plans would be amended to show the BMP accountability. And what I mean by that is, I don't know who, and maybe I just haven't seen it in writing, who will be responsible for the BMPs in this development? Will it be the city, or will it be the developer? And I hope that everything will go just wonderfully during development, but should there be problems in the development phase, we need to know who we should turn to in case of a drainage issue. I say that, and there is precedent, because when our development, the last phase of our development was being built, we had an issue in that a pond was set up as a sediment basin during the construction operation. And in a greater than 100-year rain event in 2006, it overflowed, and it caused flooding. Took us about two years to get that resolved. We had to go through York County Administration to get to the developer to fix that pond. So should a situation come up with the BMPs or the drainage in this proposed development, I would like to know how that will be addressed, what our recourse is, and who would be held accountable, or who could help us in that situation. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Kristi McCarley. I live at 110 Trey's Trail, and I also have a drainage issue. My backyard, my street flooded during Floyd. I have a drainage ditch behind me on Trey's Trail. I don't see it on that map. It drains to Pecosin. Where's it going to go? I live right here. There's a drainage ditch. Where is it? It's a VDOT drainage ditch.
Yep, thank you. You going to change the desk again? All right, is there anybody else that wants to speak? No, ma'am, you've already spoken, and I've got one back here that wants to speak. First time. Go ahead. Yes.
Mayor Hunt and council members, I originally wasn't planning to speak. I'm Tom Shepard, I'm chairman of the York County Board of Supervisors. First of all, you have my sympathy, because I know what you're going through. I want to thank you personally for sending us a letter of notification about the development, and the board supervisors, you know, obviously were concerned about some issues. You've had several residents here from York County come up and talk to you about the drainage issues. When they have a drainage issue, I have a drainage issue. That district is, half of this, almost half of this picture up here is in York County. The part over towards Woods of Tab, I've had Rossi Carroll, Hampton Roads, or not Hampton Roads, but the Williamsburg resident engineer out on, looking at the drainage that comes out of this neighborhood that flows through their multiple BMPs. And one of the problems we have is at the corner of Mansion Road and Chapel, where you have the Ms. Russell's property in there. And they own a good hunk of that, VDOT does, and the easement through there. So one of the questions I would ask that we, tonight, and just to make sure, I know you understand this, but I don't think a lot of the folks understand this. Tonight, what you're looking at, I believe, is just a preliminary plan. I don't believe you've issued a land disturbance at this point, and when they do land disturbance, you do issue that.